Mr. Placco, can you take role, please?
Lori Criski.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the resignation of Board Member Jennifer Harden.
I'll second.
Ms. Placco, can you call the roll?
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lori Criski.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Then I'd like to make a motion, the Riverside School District Board of Education has, having received a written resignation from Board Member Jennifer Harden, hereby accepts and notes in our permanent records the resignation of Mrs. Harden from this Board of Education effective June 25, 2004. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion?
I'm sad.
I will let you know, I did come from, Mrs. Harden will come back, I think it's the July 25 meeting, if I have my dates right, so that we can say goodbye properly and thank her for all of her time dedicated to the district, so. All right? I thought we were good enough. Great. No other discussion, can you call the roll?
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lori Criski.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm sorry, I forgot the motion carried on the first one, apologize. All right. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 23, 2024, and June 13, 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, can you call the roll?
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lori Criski.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to special reports.
All right. We are packed with a few special reports tonight, even though class is not in session. We do have a lot of great activities going around at our buildings. The first up is a update from our Latchkey Director, Mrs. Biello.
An update about the summer program, since I am in the middle of that.
Down but this.
The down but this. Okay. Summer camp, it was a 10-week program and it's located out of Riverview Elementary. We're finishing up week four of summer camp and our average kids per week has been about 93 every week. So it's a lot of kids and we're keeping them busy. I have 18 staff members, summer camp counselors, I call them, plus myself. There are seven regular school year Latchkey staff. I have somebody from food service and some special needs aides, as well as eight college students. And in those college students, they're former summer Latchkey kids themselves, so that's pretty awesome to have them come back after all these years. They remember the things that they liked, maybe not liked so much, and they're helping the other kids adjust and it's going really well. So I'm really excited to have them with us this summer. We do about three field trips per week. Some of those field trips that we have done so far is the Cleveland Zoo, Waldemir Park, Sky Zone, City Skate, and Chuck E. Cheese. The other two days of the week that we don't go anywhere, we have some places come into us. We've had John Mulder Terry, Ariel Inspired. We've had a foam party where they came in and just blew a bunch of foam outside and the kids just ran through as they played loud music. It was a lot of fun. And that's really about it for summer. We're just, like I said, we're going into the fifth week and I just want to take this time and opportunity to thank my entire staff, not just the summer staff. They, they work really hard, they are there with the kids, usually seven to eight hours a day. In the heat last week, it was, it was pretty rough for them, you know, because we go outside as much as we can, so they're doing a great job. So I wanted to thank my summer staff and my school year staff employees at this time. None of this is possible without their, their help and their support, so. And I think I have a slide in here. So this is just some of the trips I put up there. You know, John Mulder Terry, some, we tire them out so much, they sleep on the bus.
That's my guess. It is.
So this is last week, we were, we went out to Majestic Farms, it was Alpaca Farm, and we had our lunch at a park, so we just took a good shot of all of us. Waldemir Park, this is Urban Air. This is our foam party. If you haven't done a foam party, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun.
Looks like a lot of fun.
So they, they do like, this is like sky or bungee jumping up in the rafters of a building. It's all pretty cool. More sleeping. That's all I have for tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long is summer camp? How many weeks?
10 weeks, so we go through August 9, I think.
I believe it's already the fourth week, I'm like, this is 20 days. 20 days.
Next up, I've asked our Transportation Director, Kyle Andre, to come and kind of give a brief report out on his first year as Director and kind of some of the things that we've done. I know we had a lot of work to recruit and retain more drivers, as well as some other updates that kind of came out of committee.
I'm still here, so I think that's been positive so far. No, exciting things. I mean, over the summer, we are somewhat Latchkey sort of business as usual adjacent. We're still working, we've still got lots of stuff going on in transportation. One of the brags, I guess, that I would like to give, usually people, when I tell them I'm in the transportation space, first thing they ask me, "Oh, do you have enough drivers? How are your drivers?" This school year, we are starting with eight drivers who we did not have at the beginning of this last school year and two assistants. And I also have two driver candidates who are training this summer, so we are in a fantastic spot compared to the start of last school year. I attribute a lot of it to our culture down there. We are happy, drivers are happy, staff is happy, good things are going on in transportation, which is exciting. We are currently receiving delivery of five new special needs buses that have been on order since spring of 2023. If that gives you any sort of indication to how going about getting parts, buses, and that sort of thing goes, yeah, about a year and change. But it's exciting, we've got five of them that are coming in, we have two so far. They're slowly limping their way from Oklahoma to us bit by bit. But we've got two of them, they went through inspection today, so they are ready to hit the road. We've got three more coming, hopefully in the next week and a half or so. The other thing that I'm working on over the summer, actually starting tomorrow, is I'm working with TransFinder, which is our routing software, on the implementation and rollout of StopFinder communication over the course of the school year. StopFinder communication is essentially a way for our office to communicate with parents of students on buses a little bit more quickly. You know, right now, we sort of go through the building secretaries to push out messages and they are not quite as targeted. You know, for instance, I'll send a message over to Jamie, the Buckeye Secretary, and she'll send out a message that says, "Hey Buckeye families, bus 53 might be running late." All of the families at Buckeye will get that message, even if it doesn't pertain to them. So this is a way for us to tie it into our routing software, make things a little bit quicker, so we're excited about that. The rollout will be likely slow, building by building. I'll be learning a little bit more about it tomorrow, I start training on that, so watch for that as the school year will go on. Some other things that have been going on over the last couple of months and that we're sort of exploring on my end, as well as kind of along with more central office staff and the board, is we've been looking at vetting companies to explore the possibility of undercoating our bus fleet. We've been looking at some of the benefits and the drawbacks of doing so and potentially extending the life of our buses and that sort of thing. Some of the benefits in researching this and researching this with Brian, who's my head tech, is that, you know, obviously undercoating can extend the life of the body of buses by reducing rust and salt corrosion to the underside. In the last five years or so, the way that the state and local agencies are treating our roads is very different, the salt brines that they're using is very different, it's much more corrosive, so it's a very different battle than it was 10 years ago with some of the products that they're using. We're also exploring products that are environmentally friendly. We don't want to be using anything that's going to be putting harm into the environment, especially as the way the EPA is rolling emission standards for us are getting a lot stricter, especially as 2027 rolls around. We're trying to maintain that sort of trust with them. Some of the drawbacks that we've seen are that the undercoating using a fluid-based product, is what we're looking at mostly, is recommended to be performed annually. So obviously, this is a cost that would be each year to our fleet. Our fleet is roughly 60 buses, you know, give or take a couple each school year. It is less clean for our mechanics to work on, creates a little bit more of a mess in the garage. The undercoating will not protect the rear walls, rub rails, service doors, which are all notoriously prone to rust and deterioration. It's more focused on just the undersides of the buses. And due to lack of facilities on our end, you know, we have the added annual cost of washing the undersides of buses. We have to do this manually, kind of one at a time, taking a power washer going underneath. So paying staff to do so, it just takes a little bit more time. There are two companies that we've really taken a look at. The two companies that we've looked at are Crown Rust Control, the specific branch that we've looked at, they are based in West Middlesex, Pennsylvania. Crown is a very well-known product, there's a location right over on Ny Road. They don't have the ability to do a fleet of buses as large as ours, this branch does. We've also looked at a company called Pro Fleet Care, which is based out of Canton. With Crown Rust Control and Pro Fleet Care, they're offering very similar things to us. The biggest difference is that Crown, they can be completed at their facility, so we can take our buses to them, or they can come to us to complete it here. They do require utility hookup, so they would have to come to us and hook up to our air, our water, and that sort of thing. Likely, this would need to be completed near the bus garage, we're thinking kind of between the John R. Gym and the transportation garage. We're looking at roughly $300 to $350 per bus. They can complete about three to four buses per day, five if they're working really fast and they have their crew, and it's a one-step application process. Pro Fleet Care, very similar, they will only travel to us, they don't have the facilities down there to have our buses go there. Ideally, we'd be bringing them to us anyway, because it's going to be more cost-effective that way. They do not require utility hookup, they have a truck and trailer that they will bring that has air and water in it, so we would be able to do this at a more remote location, ideally in the backlot, very ideally on gravel, so that there is less cleanup. That way, the undercoating sort of provides or creates sort of a slick surface when it's done on concrete or asphalt, so if we did it on dirt or gravel, there'd be less cleanup for us involved. Same sort of pricing, about $300 to $350 per bus, same sort of timeline, three to four buses per day. Their application process, from my understanding, though I haven't seen it, is a two-step application process, so they do a film first and then they have a secondary film that they put on that reduces the dripping a little bit. That's one of the things we noticed. We did take a bus out to Crown in Pennsylvania to see the process, which was super cool. It drips a lot on the way back, seeing the bus sitting up and seeing how much drips off of it. Obviously, that goes away after a little while, but it's the biggest difference that I can see with them. We've only communicated with them via phone and email, we haven't actually gone to the facility or seen it. But those are the two sort of companies that we've explored up to this point. Sort of what's going on on my side of the world down in transportation right now. Thank you.
The last one I have is one that I am really excited about to move forward with for next year. This came directly out of Business Advisory and the ideas from there, and we continue to work and tweak it and did some work with it at our latest district leadership team, and that's the Portrait of a Riverside Beaver. This is really exciting for us because it really does identify competencies that we will teach pre-K through 12 and identify standards other than just those state academic standards. So our Business Advisory really said that every graduate needs to have a certain, whether their knowledge, leadership skills, or habits, they need to, they need to work to develop these things, and a good, well-rounded comprehensive education develops these skills and these competencies. So the Portrait of a Graduate is what we developed, or Portrait of a Riverside Beaver, and we specifically named it that and not the Portrait of a Graduate, because we want it to be worked on and developed at every single level, from pre-K to kindergarten all the way up and through, you know, their senior year. There are things that we will focus on throughout here, but it's a visionary framework that outlines these eight key competencies beyond just academic knowledge that are essential for success. These are things that are like lifelong learner, innovator, collaborator, communicator, creative thinking, leader, self-awareness, and high character. Like I said, it was a development in partnership with Business Advisory, we then took it to the district leadership team, so they, they agreed wholeheartedly with these ideas, and then we put together and started to put together what these ideas look like at the different levels. So how do you model, what does it mean to be a leader at the elementary school versus a leader in the high school? What does a good communicator look like in kindergarten versus a good communicator in sixth grade? So we had, we had some of that discussion, and what was unique about that activity is, when we had that discussion, we had people who didn't work in that subject area work and say, so high school teachers were explaining what elementary leadership looked like. So it was a really neat thing for them to kind of start to explain it from their own ideas. Our next steps next year, and our work next year, is to then give those ideas back to the grade level experts and say, "Here's what we thought, now tell us how you, how do you assess that? How do you present a lesson or an activity that comes up with that that also demonstrates this? What does that look like at, in your classroom and in your grade level?" Moving forward past that then is assessment and kind of display, more not assessment, but display of that. So we currently have, like, when our seniors graduate, the senior showcase, where they display their, their senior projects. Part of that senior showcase would include, "These are the standard I senior showcase that I worked on, and this is how, these are some of the competencies that I saw in action and really kind of demonstrating this at those levels." So it's these, it is this, and this is well down the road, but it's the next step to it, is how do we work to display these and model these at each level? So you know, these capstone kind of ideas and these capstone projects moving forward. So it is something that we are going to treat the same way we treat the culture playbook, as well as, as well as the strategic plans. You'll see posters in every classroom, you'll see the banners kind of posted, you'll see them when you walk in, that, you know, as in any Riverside school, as part of any Riverside education, not only are you working on those high-quality standards, those, those components in the culture playbook, but also these core competencies in the Portrait of a Riverside Beaver. It was purposely designed to match those documents and complement those documents, it will be in our student handbooks as well, and it will be a key component kind of moving forward. So something to be excited about, and something that we're going to develop throughout the next couple of years, and really kind of, you know, it is a, it is a vision of the, of the strategic plan, and kind of some of those larger concepts in that strategic plan and our development. Any questions?
Dr. Chino, I think there's a vision kind of of, if we click on one of these icons, right, that it could take us to some additional information, so as a parent, I could.
In the digital format, we would like to make those icons at some point, hyperlinks, and so that they will take them to some of the competencies, and as we develop what those competencies look like at the different grade levels. So that is a down-the-road type thing, but that would be something that we want to do in that digital kind of moving forward. But this is the, this would be the, the static display that you would see, you know, in our, in our buildings, on our, on our walls, that sort of thing.
Great, thank you.
And that concludes my reports for tonight.
Thank you.
All right, I did not send out my normal email this week, so I apologize. So is there any old business to discuss at the table? No? All right. New business? So we've, we've kind of talked about it, but I will say it's new business, and I just want to talk a little bit more. So as we all know, Jennifer Harden resigned from the Board of Education, we just talked about that. We do have a tight schedule to accept applications, interview, and to select a new board member, and this is all based on Ohio Revised Code 3313.85. I just mentioned that also Mrs. Harden will join us July 25, so we can celebrate again her accomplishments and say goodbye appropriately, so. A notification has been sent out to the district via email, social media, newspaper, any other?
Website.
Website, yeah, it's on the website. I know it's being shared, so I believe it's out there. We tried to hit as many different places that we could get it out there and make sure the public knew about it. Just to make sure everybody is aware again, we do, we've asked for all applications to be completed and mailed or emailed to me no later than June 30 at 12:00 PM Eastern Time, and we will schedule interviews for that evenings of June 2, June 3, and June 5 if needed, so.
July.
Oh my gosh, July, thank you.
Yeah, it's coming.
Too quickly. Again, if we can avoid July 5, we will. I know it's a holiday weekend, people probably want to have some fun and not think about interviewing, right? But we just don't know how many applications we'll get, so I wanted to make sure we secured all three dates just in case. And I think everybody responded that they're good with that in the evening, correct?
Well, on July 5, is anyone working? Maybe we could do that in the morning if we had to. You're working?
Sorry for you.
I would come back if we were having meetings later in the day.
So, all right.
Let's try to avoid Friday.
I'm going to try my best.
Yeah, let's see how that goes.
One minor detail. If, if, if someone had gotten their application in to, let's say, Mr. Placco, and it didn't get to you, is that okay?
He forwarded to me.
You're forwarding, any applications that come to the wrong, we're forwarding.
And then I'm putting them immediately, I hope everybody has seen, I created a Google folder for us and I put everything in there immediately, so anything we receive is there for all of us to see.
So when I read it, I thought I saw Mr. Placco or?
His is for applications, but it's okay, it'll get to the right place.
It's kind of, yeah. If they go directly to our website, they can, the form is on the website. So they just pull it from there.
Okay. It'll get, it'll get to me.
Just in case there's someone that ain't quite get it right.
And then I'll put it in the folder, so.
All right. Denise, are you out for more than the 5th?
No.
Okay. Maybe we could just say Saturday if we need to.
Technically, we're supposed to be done by the 5th, so we're going to shoot for that. If there's some reason we can't, then we'll have to discuss that and figure out what we need to do, so.
Just as an aside, I won't be here on the 25th for our July meeting.
Right. So we can talk about that also here for one second.
What, what time do you want to start, the 2nd, 3rd, 6 o'clock?
I think we said 6.
Do we want to start any earlier, or let's stick with 6? Try 5?
I'm, I'm good with any time, whatever fits.
After 4.
I'd have to look at my work schedule so I can let you guys know, because I don't know what time my meetings go to.
If I have to kind of get a notice out tomorrow for the?
Oh, I meant to tell you that, I'll put it on Gary.
For the 2nd of July.
All right.
Unless I send it out on the weekend, which I was.
I will get it to you tomorrow. So I'll get that for you. So everybody else is good with 5 if I don't have meetings?
I could.
And I'll try to reschedule, okay? So let me just double-check my work schedule.
Okay.
All right. Just for anybody's knowledge too, when we can direct them there, so if anybody's asking what it means to be a school board member, the OSBA has a ton of resources for them to go in and look at, so I just want to make that also available, that, you know, that information's there, so people can go in and take a look at that. Any questions about the plan or?
I think you already laid it out, right?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We're good.
Okay.
That one question I had, he answered it, said 30 days.
All right, good, I'm sorry, I didn't get to you right away. Thank you.
I'm good.
So that was the only new business I had, I just wanted to make sure we went over that. Any other new business?
Are we going to keep our July 11 meeting also?
So is there, I, I think the administration was also asking about that, so is there a need to change the July 11?
If, if we were going to keep that meeting, we would ask that we move it to the 9th, because July 10 is a big date for personnel, so having it before the 10th is significant if we're hiring. We do have some hires still that are out there, so if we were to hire anybody from another district by Ohio Revised Code.
Yeah. Have we posted everything that we need to post yet?
We just got a resignation today.
We could do it right now.
So we're posting tomorrow.
Another surprise.
We could, I think they're looking, yeah, but I think they're looking to say, in case they get something up to the 9th, that, that would be why.
We, we won't have that recommendation done.
Yeah, but the interviews would be on the 5th? Like, the interviews end by the 5th? And they're talking about moving the meeting to the 9th?
On the 9th, we have the architecture and designer interviews.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a, that's a committee, though.
So same, we could, we could do it before that?
Well, again, I.
If we needed to.
We, we have to, like, that would be the meeting that we would have to appoint someone if we have a meeting, correct?
That would be correct.
So if we have a meeting after the 5th, we have to appoint somebody at the next meeting within the 10-day, like, it's extremely complicated, we really don't have 30 days if we have a meeting scheduled.
Oh, I see.
So, but we're looking about moving the meeting up, so let me ask this, do you guys want us to look at moving the meeting to the 9th?
If we were going to have that meeting, yes, we would prefer the 9th to the 11th.
Does anybody have any concerns about meeting July 9 versus July 11 for our special meeting?
I'm fine with it.
What time? 6, still 6?
I, I probably would say yes again because of my work schedule.
Me, me too. Well, that's what I'm asking, because I'm, I'm, we're, I'm taking a half a day to do the buildings and ground stuff, so.
I can, I can do the 9th. Would you be okay with 6? So we can move it up if you guys want to make it the 9th versus the 11th?
I'm out of town on 11th anyway, so.
Okay.
Worked better for me, and if we're appointing one over that meeting, I can swear them in or if they have someone else.
Okay, and to Belinda's point, after we do all the interviews on the 2nd, 3rd, hopefully not the 5th, that would be where the person would need to be sworn in, the new board member would need to be sworn in. We do have some leeway, if for some reason we need it, but we would want to discuss that with Dan McIntyre, our attorney, just to make sure, because of the Ohio Revised Code.
So the resignation, when is the formal date of the resignation?
25th. Yesterday.
So it was when she?
Two days.
We're counting days now, yeah, so.
It's probably two days ago, it is.
Yeah. So the July 11 meeting, just to confirm, will be moved to July 9 at 6:00 PM.
And then I'll be talking about the Auburn career option thing on the 9th.
On the 9th. Yep.
We will, we will still be at this one.
Auburn and any personnel updates? And anything else that?
Any, any other business that's there?
Well, some board member, there, yeah, there'll be, there'll be a small business
agenda.
Okay.
Gary, will you, will you update that?
I'll update everything. I think if we want to discuss the July 25 meeting.
One more.
Mrs. Grassi being out of town and having a potentially new board member, would it make sense to move that to August 1, which we have a placeholder that we were going to make a special meeting in this, move July 25 to August 1?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess you do.
So the following week, we have a special placeholder on anyways?
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah, that'd be fine.
By that time, we're past the 10th, we have to give permission anyway, so the August 1st would be perfect.
So, no 25th.
We also have a board, we also have our board meeting scheduled for the 15th of August.
That's the one that is...
We move it up because of personnel.
Because of personnel.
So, we don't have one later in the month in August, correct? We don't have one. So we won't have one until September 25th.
Alright, so let me ask, so is everybody okay with moving the July 25th board meeting to our August 1st placeholder that we had for any special meetings?
I'm fine with it.
Yes. Belinda? So there we go, August 1st, and I will check with Mrs. Harden to make sure that she's good with August 1st.
Okay.
I'll change that. Alright, so a couple changes there. July 25th to August 1st. Any other new business? Okay. Great. So that then brings us to our committee and liaison reports. The first one is a superintendent's business advisory report. We have not had a business advisory meeting, you know, being out of school, I don't think there'll be one planned until the beginning...
Not, not until we're back here.
Beginning of the school year. Alright, that brings us to curriculum and programming committee and facilities liaison.
Okay. Alright, so we just met on Wednesday this week, and Dr. Malakar reviewed the Effective Leadership Academy program that was introduced to our 6th graders at Lammuth. And it was highly received, the kids really, you know, benefited from it. And basically, it's a leadership, social skills sessions, sessions that are put in a non-tested area, and it went well, and the administration would like to expand this program to offer it to the end of 7th grade, so that it's a transition thing for them before they go over to the campus for 8th grade. And then also, we, it was thought that the 8th grade classes would also benefit in the fall. So this program cost will appear on the July board agenda, but now it's the August agenda?
August 1st.
Yeah, okay. But anyway, just so you know that thing. Alright, so there was, is on the agenda tonight, a resignation of a CCP teacher, college credit plus teacher at the high school, and we are fortunate enough that we're going to have Keith Nanos, is that his name, coming to the Riverside campus from Lakeland Community College to teach two classes. And this teaching position, it's not, in other words, they're not replacing this full-time position, but he will be coming for those two classes. And then there's also the advanced manufacturing career elective that they're gonna put on hold till next year. They're going to, the partnerships that they developed, they're going to work with them to build more interesting and relevant curriculum for the '25, '26 school year. Okay? And then the Auburn Academy is moving forward, and the administration is putting information together as well as planning a parent informational session for our Auburn career students that typically return from the Career Center at about 11 o'clock, eat lunch, and then go to their classes. And so, they will be engaged, they would be meeting in this space, and then there may be some other spaces they go to, but basically, it's to engage in personalized learning, and staff members that would be in charge of these students for that afternoon are trained in that initiative. So the students will have, will have the advantage of being able to take four instead of three classes, and so that is a benefit to them. And also, it's my understanding that, you know, if they master it, then they can move along and they don't just have to wait, wait, you know, so there are a lot of benefits to it. And more information is going to be available at our meeting on July 11th, right? Alright?
Now the 9th.
Now the 9th, sorry. Yeah, jumping dates. Alright, and then Dr. Cheryl Lanning, she's our, she heads up the, a variety of services for our students, gave an overview of a data platform they are using called Branching Minds. And there is one more year piloting this program at Lammuth and River View. And there is a huge savings in the number of staff hours in, you know, keeping track of the intervention data, like, if you are doing interventions with students, you have to document that, and then, you know, it's just very time consuming with the number of students and everything. And so, this definitely saves time, and it's accessible, easily accessible, it's not just sitting in somebody's notebook, it's, you know, accessible to others who need that information for a student. And this program, they are gonna look at other platforms just to make sure this is the best one, but right now, you know, it appears to be going quite smoothly, and it doesn't involve an annual subscription, so there is a cost to it. Alright, and Dr. Lanning also reviewed PBIS, Public Behavior Intervention Support Screening Tool. This helps identify students at risk so an intervention can be put in place. There are, you know, you don't want it too cumbersome if you're just doing a screening, you just, you know, there's only gonna be six questions, but if there's a student that, you know, we feel has some things that need to be addressed, then there's like another level of 20 questions, and, and then it really, you know, you can pinpoint what kind of intervention would help this child. And the other tool that's used for the high school is an opt-in, opt-out program, so. And then at the middle school, additional time is being planned for English, language arts, and math instruction. And at the high school and middle school, time is being built into schedules to help students with their academics. So, you know, if they need some extra help here, there, wherever, but some of them are gonna be very targeted interventions, and, and we have a variety of programs and tools that we can use. And then efforts will continue to align state standards with instruction, reviewing test data, and provide more training for administration and staff to improve academic performance. So that's about it for curriculum. So am I on for finance?
Nope, not yet.
No, okay. So as far as the facilities liaison, I, I will just say I've been attending the focus group meetings, we've had three in this room, we have one more on July 8th, and, you know, we really, Dr. Rettino's doing a good job going through all the materials, but then it gives people a chance to provide input via their phone or if we have devices available. And the thing about it is that the discussion that comes at the end is really helpful, a lot of good ideas and, and thoughts to consider. So I hope I didn't steal your thunder.
Are you all gonna share all that with the board at some point, like, the, the conversations that have been had at the focus groups?
Yes.
And how, how well attended have they been? I'm curious.
We've had about 10, 10 to 12, 10 to 12 per, so if we need to have another one or do one digitally, we may offer that depending on how this lasts.
We initially had about 120 people sign up saying they're interested, and then when we actually put out the dates and times, we had about 45 to 50 people actually sign up, and then from there, 10 to 12 people show up. So if we get through these four meetings and, you know, 50 or 60 of those people didn't show up, we'll send out another notice for maybe another meeting or two.
Yeah, we might want to do that because we have the three this week, and if somebody was on vacation or couldn't make it, and somebody called me and said, is there another one, and I said, yes, July 8th, but you never know, so we might have to catch some other people.
We, we will do, we can do, we can do one through Zoom too.
Okay.
And post a, like, a large format Zoom.
That sounds good. So that's all I have?
Thank you.
Unless you have something else on?
Great. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Alumni Association, Mr. Fishel.
So the golf outing was a great success, everyone that worked it did a great job, and the Alumni Association took in a net of four, about $4,500. Most of that money goes to scholarships, and so it's a, it's a very good effort, and hope to continue to grow it in the future. The Buildings and Grounds, a laundry list of things, tuck pointing was completed at the Lammuth Gym, painting prep has started and painting should be done end of the month. Lammuth outside basketball court and four-square court is completed, the striping will take place prior to the start of school. Got carpeting quotes, we'll be spending just under $50,000 on carpeting in, in different The, we have the Buckeye older modular units, a quote of $14,722, which is a go, Mel Ridge removal of seven carpets, and that's part of the carpet, the price was $10,222.40 at Mel Ridge. The John R. Band Room, $10,182. The John R. Music Room, $8,535.60. The Lammuth Office Area, $4,806, so that's the carpet. CLAD, C-L-A-D Mechanical, is looking to tear down both of the Riverside High School steam boilers for inspection, cleaning, and operational testing. It's just a normal maintenance to keep them functioning as well as they can, and also more efficiently. So as you clean them out, they don't get clogged up, so to speak, let's put it in layman's terms. So that maintenance is, is a go. Baseball and softball field work is starting. Summer cleaning is moving forward. Maintenance is making repairs, cutting grass, lining the sports fields, and completing small HVAC plumbing and electrical projects. And those are the things we can do in-house, different from what CLAD Mechanical is doing. There was a, an inspection by a company, and it, it's about the roofs and, and solar. So what this company does is they come out and they assess our roofs, and the, the Inflation Reduction Act, I think, is what they tie into. And so anyway, they came out, and what they do is they inspect the roofs, see what kind of condition they're in, see if there are roofs that are available to put solar panels on now, see if there's roofs that aren't available, meaning that they're not gonna last the 25 years that they require. Then they take a look at that and see what that would cost, and they put it all into a formula and see if it's worth it for them to come out and do that work and offer us a project that, that would be subsidized, really. And if any roofing had to be done, it would be an interest, interest free, interest-free payment over like 20 years. So anyway, it's just, it's just a big ball of wax, and they came out and with Mr. Arlesic and looked at some roofs, and now they're supposed to get back with us with a plan if they have one. Okay, so there'll be more updates on that. Track update, Mr. Arlesic's not here, do we, do we have, do we have an update on the track?
We don't have a track right now.
They, they...
They're on track, okay.
Yeah, so we are, there's, there's some shift. They, they ground off the surface of the track, the asphalt is actually in better condition than we anticipated, there's a solid surface there. They're going to, they ground down, I think, an inch and a half, and now that should be all done today. They're going to reasphalt it after the holiday, put the new, then it sits and cures for a while. That will be ready for the tailgate opening weekend. Then we have a timeframe where we have a home football game on Friday and then two away games. At that point, they will put the track down and then come back and line it after that.
Okay, so we had an issue on the lanes was too narrow, and so have they solved that problem?
They have, they, they, they have a solution where they're cutting out up to the bland bleachers, and it will be, it will actually be, be right.
Just enough room.
Just the right, it is, it's just enough room to be there. Thank goodness we didn't set any records on it.
Yeah, so if any records had been set, they would have been disqualified because we didn't have a proper track.
That is correct.
Will that be done in time for the, for the big weekend track?
The night run, it will not.
Oh, that's cross-country.
Yes, it will not be done for the cross-country run.
But we don't, we don't really need it for that.
They typically run across that field, they're, they will reroute the course to a different way, to a different finish.
Okay, so thank you for that, everything's going well on the track, so, okay.
Go far.
The basketball update, it's ongoing, so.
I, I do have an update.
Okay, so there you go. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
We talked about...
Yeah, the bathrooms are, are going to be in process, that's about all they said.
We approved the purchase order.
Right.
Last meeting for the partitions, it's going to happen sometime over the summer, it hasn't started yet, and they're doing most of the first floor bathrooms this summer.
They did not give us a starting date, and so they still have it, so it's going to happen soon.
I think they have some time in July to start.
They were, our, our crew was going to, they were gonna come in a demo, our crew was gonna come in and thoroughly sanitize, make sure that all the, all the fixtures are actually attached solidly, and then they were gonna come in and put the new stalls in.
And that's a fairly simple project, so it won't take long.
There is a lot going on though. Like, if you go around and you go to schools, it's like, there's work everywhere, that's what we can see, so what's going on inside too, I know there's a lot of work that goes on in the summer.
Oh, right, there's a lot of cleaning and all of that. I, I think it's been mentioned before, but it's worthy of mentioning again, the staff really takes everything out of the rooms, does a deep clean, and puts everything back, so all of that gets done in the summer.
Alright, that brings us to Poly, Policy Committee Legislative Liaison, Mrs. Grassi.
The Policy, Policy Committee had a meeting previously in the previous month, so we did not have one this month, and we have the policies on our board agenda to, for approval this evening. Legislatively, I do go through all of these updates that we get, and I'm trying not to repeat myself, so, you know, these things go through so many, so many different committees and whatnot, I, I'm trying to read these to make sure that I'm not reading you the same information over and over, so bear with me as I try and get through some of the new things. The House Primary and Secondary, this is from the week of May 20th, so we're going all the way back to our last board meeting. The House Primary and Secondary Education Committee heard proponent testimony on House Bill 407, and this bill is the one that would establish reporting requirements for chartered non-public schools that enroll students participating in general scholarship programs and all the requirements that would go along with that. OSBA offered proponent testimony in partnership with the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators and the Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators. Other proponents included BASSA, which is the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, OASBO, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, and then some other individuals and treasurers and superintendents from some other districts, the Ohio Education Association and the Ohio Federation of Teachers. So they all testified in, as a proponent of that bill. The Senate Ways and Means Committee heard and sponsored testimony on Senate Bill 242. This bill would expand the charitable use of property tax exemptions. When there's a property tax exemptions, the schools don't get any property tax from those organizations. Ohio Department of Education and Workforce released new attendance guidelines, the new resource, and they put out a resource guide, the new resource reflects the need for proactive early intervention to address attendance issues in Ohio schools. Ohio law requires school districts to implement interventions to address school attendance when schools, when students meet certain thresholds of school absences, they put out a report. I downloaded it if anybody is interested in taking a look at it, I haven't, so that's online. Some other things in the week of June 3rd. The 2022-23 district-level special education data was reported to the public, that was sent out via, you could look at it online via Excel spreadsheets. I did take a look at it to take a look at the Riverside information, and there were some bands that, that we had met the criteria and some bands that we had not, so that stuff is available online for, for anybody to review. The Ohio Department of Education and Workforce has also issued a model cellphone use policy and resources to go along with that. We do have a policy 5136.01. It was last updated in 2017 and adopted on 3/19 of 2018. I would assume that because there's now model policy, that perhaps in our next policy updates, we'll get some information or maybe some updates on that. But this information just went about telling you about what is included in the model policy. I thought this was interesting, from the State Board of Education, that the school counselor construction trades, trades training, in recent legislation, school counselors will now be required to complete an approved construction trades career pathway training program as part of the renewal requirements for their pupil service license and their school council license. It goes on to tell you that any licensed school counselor who works with students in grade 7 through 12 is required to take this training. They have to complete four hours of training during each license renewal. The training is going to be offered onsite at the Joint Labor Management Apprenticeship Training Centers. These trainings will be offered regionally across the state on a rotating basis throughout the calendar year, and the training will be completed in a single session. That's, that's, this is new. Again, this is authorized along with the affiliated Construction Trades of Ohio Foundation is paying for this, so there's no cost to the school counselors or the district, and that foundation is paying for all of the training. So there was that. In additional recent legislation, anyone holding a pupil activity permit, including coaches, are required to complete a student mental health training course approved by the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. This training will help supervisors and coaches recognize risk factors, signs of suicidal ideation, symptoms of common mental health disorders, and learn strategies to support youth experiencing common mental health concerns. Supervisors and coaches applying to renew their pupil activity permit must submit a certificate of completion from the approved course list with their application, and new supervisors and coaches have the duration of their current permit to complete the training. So that is new. In the week of June 3rd, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee heard proponent testimony on the charter school bill. There were only a few. There were only a few opponents listed. The committee also heard sponsor testimony on House Bill 468. This bill would make changes regarding the presentation of information on patriotic organizations to students in public schools. It permits federally recognized patriotic youth organizations to request a public school to allow representatives from the organization to provide written information or present information in person to students on school property. It would require public schools to provide at least one opportunity per year for a representative of an organization to provide information. And it would require public schools to request a criminal records check of the organization's representative before permitting the representative to provide information to students. The House Civil Justice Committee heard information on House Bill 178, which would prohibit public schools and public preschools from discriminating against an individual because of traits associated with an individual's race, including hair texture and protective hairstyles such as braids, locks, and twists. This bill would also allow an individual alleging a school has discriminated to sue in any court having jurisdiction and this committee passed the bill out into the House. The committee also heard sponsor testimony on House Bill 557, which would permit schools to withhold directory information. The bill also removes directory information from the definition of public record, which would probably make Gary really happy because that's a lot of the public records requests we get from entities requesting directory information for staff and students. New bills that were introduced were House Bill 617, which would protect individuals from being compelled to wear a mask or other facial covering in a public school among other locations, and House Bill 623, which would require school districts to offer at least one high school computer science course. Again, I'm trying not to repeat things that I have mentioned previously. They're still going through committees. Hopefully, we have, we've already been required to report to the state the individuals through the district who get free and reduced lunch. So hopefully those individuals in our district are taking advantage of the grocery benefits that they get for Sunbucks. So I know they get $125 in a SNAP card and hopefully they are taking advantage of that over the summer. There is free online professional development coursework focusing on special education, which is available through the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Learning Management System. So there was information on that and it is free. On June 11th, information came out from OSBA that there is some proposed federal legislation, this is not state, this is federal legislation, that would require high schools to conduct voter registrations. This bill has been introduced at the high school, as the High School Voter Empowerment Act, which would require that public high schools be designated as voter registration agencies under the National Voter Registration Act and would create a grant to help them conduct voter registration drives for students. Just an update for everyone out in the community that we have had a sales tax holiday for the past number of years. It's only been for, I think, a weekend. It has now been extended. So it is now a 10-day sales tax holiday. It starts Tuesday, July 30th and it goes until midnight on Thursday, August 8th. And this is designed to help families save on supplies and clothes for the school year. OSBA Capitol Conference Registration opens July 22nd. Moving along, sorry, there's a lot. So, this is the week, this is, this was published on June 6th. A bill that would change the current law regarding release time for religious education instruction received a second hearing in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. This would require school districts to have a policy that allows students to be excused from school to attend a released time course in religious instruction. Currently, state law makes the policy permissive, but it's not required. House Bill 445 does not make additional changes to current law other than changing the "may" to "shall." But it should be noted that the U.S. Supreme Court decision, there's a Supreme Court decision that has stated that release time for religious instruction is allowed but not required. So that's going to be interesting because the two things would be in conflict with one another. The Supreme Court decision stated that the school allows the release time that the classes are to be held in a separate location, that it is not on school premises and the school does not encourage nor discourage participation. The court decision also requires that the policy be nondiscriminatory to students of all religious faiths and persuasions. Some other recently introduced legislation is House Bill 525, which would make changes regarding the penalty for assault when the victim is a school employee or volunteer. House Bill 556 would create a criminal liability for certain teachers and librarians for the offensive pandering obscenity. House Bill 560 would make changes regarding implicit bias training for licensed educators. House Bill 571 would require that schools and higher education institutions to include the national suicide and crisis lifeline telephone numbers on student identification cards, student planners, and electronic portals. House Bill 596 was introduced, which would require school board approval of municipal tax increment financing, incentive district arrangements. House Joint Resolution Number 6 would propose to enact Section 23 of Article 1 of the Constitution of the State of Ohio to limit property tax increases for a property owner to not more than 4% a year. Senate Bill 271 was introduced, which would authorize a refundable income tax credit or rebate for homeowners and renters whose property taxes or portion of their rent exceeds 5% of their income. As I'm reading all this, I just want people to understand that the amount of legislation that comes out in the House and the Senate that has to do with education or things that affect our school districts, it's enormous. And as you can tell, many things that people are just unaware of that happens down in Columbus. And so that's why I think this is really important for us to hear. This is all from the week of June 10th. Again, a lot of this was repetitive. The Senate Insurance Committee heard proponent testimony on House Bill 78, which would make changes regarding the state teachers' retirement, board elections, and membership requirements. The House Armed Services and Veterans Committee held a second hearing on Senate Bill 113, which would prohibit a person who fails to comply with the military selective service system from holding certain public offices or employment with the state and would require that high schools notify students of any obligation to register for the selective service system. In the week of June 17th, the House Finance Committee met and heard testimony on House Bill 629. This legislation would make capital and other appropriations and it included $600 million for the construction and renovation of K-12 school buildings. I believe that is for the OFCC, of which we're still waiting for our money from 2016. So there was that. The committee also heard testimony on Senate Bill 292, which would make capital and other appropriations. That Senate bill also made, there was $600 million for the construction and renovation of K-12 school buildings. It's just interesting that the two of the Senate and the House don't currently agree on how those dollars will be spent. So it's kind of hung up. The House Public Health Committee heard information on House Bill 356. This bill would make changes regarding cardiac monitoring for youth and be designated as the Healthy Cardiac Monitoring Act. The committee accepted a substitute version of the bill that would require the participation, physical exams be conducted once per calendar year, allows the physical exam to be created by the Ohio High School Athletic Association, states that the physical exam forms must be retained for the duration of the student's enrollment in the school, makes mandatory the informational meetings on the symptoms and warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest prior to the start of each athletic season, and requires removal, evaluation, and written clearance if a student athlete exhibits difficulty breathing, chest pains, dizziness, or an abnormal racing heart rate. That's all I have.
One small note, the House and Senate met on a lot of bills yesterday. Some got voted on and some didn't. So I'm sure you'll update that next meeting.
Yeah, there were some things that happened at late minute, last minute, dark of night. And it's their last, it is their last session before the elections in November. And so some of the stuff that went through was interesting and I'll update it.
And some that didn't go through was interesting.
I'll have some additional information on that next. I didn't have enough time to read.
Oh, no, I mean, they went till late at night. It couldn't, it was impossible.
So that information will probably come out next week and I'll read through that and provide everyone with an update next meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry for the length of all of that, but like I said, there is just so much that goes on down in the legislative chambers that folks are unaware of. It's just important to stay on top of these things, so.
Thank you. Brings us to our superintendent's report.
Yeah, we got a really exciting update today. There's a whole lot going on. The reason why we're here is not because of the air conditioning. It's actually because we can't handle the trouble of building right now because of the best of fuel. They are building, they're working right now on the secure best of fuel at the campus, so we'll talk a little about what's going on there. That structure, as we mentioned multiple times, has been built out front of the front doors. They are on schedule to be completed on time and it really does kind of look good. It's exciting to see how big the offices and our security officers will be as well as they greet people and help through the double doors. That is, that's actually a little bit ahead of the proposed schedule. The next, if you look at, they're also working on the board office doors. So the golden rod in color doors and under panels have been removed and replaced with a beautiful plywood wall that gets decorated daily with a new picture from Mr. Caravan's travels throughout the world. Printed on eight and a half by 11. So soon the wall will be down, but they are replacing that restore front. Glass glass is going to look really nice with the entrance to the board.
Are you getting new doors?
They are putting new doors.
Oh, what are you doing with the old doors? Those are like our cans.
Maybe running, they're fancy. I'm not sure what happened to them. We said goodbye with a little bit of. We could bring, maybe turn them into a table. It's not a matter of. Other updates, this one we are excited about. We are running fiber to the, to the house that's coming across the banfield and put some poles in around the way to do that. Working with the Claration Pango Power, they donated the labor we paid for the equipment. So there's a really nice kind of benefit from them. We ended up putting four poles running to the house and lights as well on those poles so we can actually light up the entrance coming in and out of the parking lot as well. And then fiber will be installed, especially in the residence.
But the equipment we paid for was very small. They put the poles up.
They put the pole, they did.
They provide the lights, too, correct?
Yes. But it was an extremely small cost, but what kind of happened, it would have been about $3,000 for several poles. Yes. Super excited we were able to make that work. And then also we are putting more staff over at the, oh, we have registrations for coaches over there. So having appropriate NSP is really exciting to commission the staff. Registration, Latchkey's over there. We have a lot of staff. We are building up the rooms.
Who's there now?
Right now.
Considering it was supposed to be just maintenance when we started.
Next year it will be registration, Latchkey, coaches, professional ed directors.
Instructional coaches.
Instructional.
Be clear, because that confuses people. Actually, you said coaches. I'm like, you're moving coaches to the house? And then I realized you were talking about my people.
Food service. Food service. Pre-school.
Are you moving?
Me?
No.
Not unless I force you.
Not yet.
Hi, Ron.
The track replacement, so we asked where we are with the track. That's the track going by while they're tearing it up. It's really neat to see how they took it up and they're shooting the asphalt up. Placing it different places around the parking lot, probably using some of that ground of asphalt with better gravel and replacing it. Kind of repurposing the materialized campus for a less direction now as well. And that project is progressing along. Our Bracy baseball and softball fields are being resurfaced as well. So the infield, the infield there at the morning track is being done. They brought a lot of dirt in, so they're doing a lot of work on those. Right now, so those fields are closed, no problem, but they're getting done and they're on schedule and progressing as usual with the construction. About 40 days yesterday, continue to work through it, which is kind of impressive. The move looks like a totally new building. All the work that's going on in there. That's a hole they cut the wall in the front entrance. And actually, where that hole is, is the, is actually inside where that hole comes, glass curtains. Those are open, they're facing probably and being replaced. So they're working and kind of updating that. That will be the secure best of fuel at the entrance to the office from there. They finished the back glass. You can see that the plexiglass that was up there forever is gone and it's all replaced with all new glass. Actually handicapped accessible doors, the one behind a button as well as five. And really looks, really looks nice, that back entrance. The playground, horseberg pad and basketball court have been poured in addition to the recently installed Gaga Ball Pit as Eagle Scout Project is right next to that. Kind of awkward where they are. So that will be striped by the end. And they are painting right now the gym and just walking in with the ceiling and the white painted in looks absolutely amazing. So they're redoing some of the colors and painting that. That will be done, I believe, by the end of next week. I think is the deadline for that. And then they start the branding floor in the move, so. Buckeye, Buckeye looks better. They tore out the front and are redoing the entrance to Buckeye. They're coming on with that as well. Buckeye really looks like a completely different building in the front entrance as well as kind of all the glass that is there. They have some of the glass in the office itself. Again, they're moving the personal office and the administrative assistant, kind of flip flopping and putting the best of fuel in. Doing a lot of work in that building as well. One thing to note, a lot of our summer work, we didn't, I came out of the district leadership team. Our teachers kind of asked to do some summer work as well. They've been doing some summer maintenance work. And we've heard nothing but great things. They saw a bump in the yard. Hey, look, this classroom is kind of mess. I mean, painted for them. And they're painting, they're planting flowers. They're absolutely loving it. None of them have crashed the floors forever yet either. So it's all been, it's all really been great work kind of going on and it takes a lot of pride in the work they're doing. We see them all kind of always working and smiling and really enjoy being in the building. It's a new atmosphere for them. It's a really great opportunity that they came out of that. As Mrs. Brewster mentioned, we have had some focus group meetings. We've hosted three so far. We kind of just presented that where we've been, what we are, and then kind of the ideas that we've presented. So we combined the information, kind of a clickbells version of Bielowski, as well as the MP5 recommendations, and then gathered information from stakeholders who said they wanted to be part of this. Assume what they agree with, what they didn't, kind of other ideas that make a school whole, partnerships, different outside of the box thinking ideas. And I will, the goal is to take all four of those meetings, we have to have another one after that. We will put all that data into kind of one summary, look for something, kind of present that out and then go from there for kind of where the plan is to take the next step along the way from that plan. We have a job fair coming up Thursday, July 11th from 10 to 2 in this very room. Really excited to kind of have those positions. Looking for classified exempt non-teaching regular substitute. We do have some certified substitute teaching positions as well, but a few dangling certified teaching positions that are starting to come open as we move.
I have a question on the website. If you go for the substitute positions and it takes you to the NEC.
EFC, NEO.
Yeah, website, that link doesn't work. Just so you know. It comes up with like no data. It takes you to a brochure, I think, and then when you click on the brochure, it says click your. So if you want to get some.
We do want to have some. And finally, class of 2037, if you haven't registered already, please make sure you get in and register for kindergarten online and schedule an appointment with the registration office to pick up your yard sign. If you're starting to see them pop up, it really does kind of make me smile. Look at the yard signs just sitting around. We have a number of students who are ready for kindergarten moving forward and we are excited to have them and welcome them.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Treasurers Report and Committee Update. So Finance, Audit, and Personnel Committee, technically Booster Organization Liaison.
I have a little bit.
Mrs. Brewster, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Jim served as the chair and I was the second person on the committee, so I'm glad I took good notes. So we met on June twentieth and we set our next meeting for July eighteenth at seven thirty, and then the curriculum meeting will be following that one. Our treasurer will cover the finances at this meeting, including grants our district has received and will be approving as a board. Of special note, there is no increase in school fees, and there is an increase in, unfortunately, there is an increase in our insurance coverage, but we're having some discussions and seeing where we're at with that, but everything's been going up. There was a discussion regarding the undercoating of our school buses, which Mr. Andre covered. We're pretty much up to date with our buses, fifty-two bus fleet, is it? Okay. And I, I just found it interesting, sixty-two square miles in our district, traveling about eight hundred and ten thousand miles on average per year. It was just good information to look up. The new buses cost about a hundred and twenty thousand each today. Some of the buses we have in our fleet were less, but then going forward, who knows? And thank you for researching with the Pro Fleet Care, and I know you've had the one bus undercoated with the crop, so that was done. Typically, we try to get twelve years from each bus, correct? And I didn't know this, but they do rotate the buses, so if you're a Leroy, run one year, that bus might be used somewhere else, is what you're saying. All right, and then maintenance and repairs can also be minimized with this application because it makes it easier to like turn wrenches, you don't get a lot of buildup and, and, and then some things don't break down, especially the electrical, which was in both of their online stuff, online information. And both of them mentioned a return on the investment, for every dollar spent, you save six dollars over a period of time, there's been studies, and they must have been quoting the same study to get that data. And so they cited that benefit, and I appreciate you sharing the information tonight. And then also, we discussed the addition of three sports to the program, girls golf, gymnastics and girls wrestling. And that's on the agenda tonight. And I would attempt to try to explain, especially what you have to explain tonight.
All right, that brings us then to an update from the treasurer, Mr. Platko.
All right, as always, we'll go through our financial report a little bit here, so that, you know, our, our May twenty twenty-four financial report will be available on our website on the treasurer page. Our total cash balance at the May was forty-one point eight million dollars. Of that, the general fund balance was just over twenty-five million, and our permanent fund, currently the undercurrent balance, which now we did other projects, was at just over six million dollars. Going through May, we're ninety-one point six seven percent fiscal year, revenue is sitting at ninety-seven and a half percent, our expenditures tend to be lower than usual. Our revenue for May was only seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, that's, that's lower than usual because of the, our home set home back recompensments in May, and as our salaries were suddenly late this year, we can't break the year. All that value of progress is even child, but our pensioned state combination payments. Interest rate for the general fund was ninety-three thousand dollars, currently the interest rate of five point four five percent is to Ohio, and our other investment accounts four point oh four percent, our total total of four point eight nine percent. Our expenditures were eighty point seven million, it's a little bit lower than usual because of some account adjustments and we have some management of office for the twenty seven one account, accounting loans and a lot of this. The financial forecast is providing, uh, how we're going to, which we are expecting a lower, lower than usual. The, uh, just update on the career technician, we are, we have the R R Qs, and again, we received statements qualifications for design professional services and architecture firms. We have received six, uh, state qualifications, we narrowed down to four, that will interview and those firms, and the line I am there, maybe ones around me, with a goal to write this select and negotiate a contract for a demolition for a August first outwork for business.
Are they, are they coming to, are they coming to present?
They are coming to present.
I mean, no, 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 are the ones, are they also coming to present to the full board on the twenty-fifth, or are we?
For the first. The plan was just the ability to ask, but why?
No, 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 I was just asking if we had invited them to come to that meeting, we would have to change that, okay.
And that, you know, kind of, we'll turn it at that point, there's a, need for that. Uh, for a construction manager, this is a little longer timeline, but we receive four firms, I believe, here, string those and shortlist, shortlist firms here this month, this present proposal, July, July twenty-sixth, maybe those top three firms, apply for it with the goal for August fifteenth and four. One of the things that, that at least did not mention during, what we talked about during our finance meeting, was about TIFs and RIDs, and it's complicated subjects, and so kind of what I thought was, because as we continue to see development in our community, we're seeing these TIFs and RIDs more often, and we see the notice from copper township on RIDs, that's why I put all of these, because they're, they're very similar, but I just explained with the R R Qs, we're going to have a future session, I think, as we have to do. So a TIF is an acronym for tax increment financing, it's an economic development mechanism available to local governments in Ohio, the finance public infrastructure improvements in certain circumstances, residential improvement. A TIF works by knocking in the taxable worth of real property and the valuable at the time of the authorizing legislation approved, and payments derived from that increase assessment value of that, of the improvements to that property are directed towards a separate fund of financing construction, public, public infrastructure as the financing of this, I'll explain that in a long name. So, a couple other things though, a local political subdivision may exempt from, they exempt real property taxes on the value of private improvements, around seventy-five percent of that value for a term of ten years, and if a local authority seeks to offer greater amounts of assistance under that TIF, they must obtain the current vote, the current vote on the collective boards of education to authorize that. With that authorization, they exempt the percentage of the value for thirty, thirty years. So essentially what's what happens is that the township will say, maybe, they're doing the development, maybe the funds for the public improvements, roads, sewers, things like that. So they basically pass legislation on their governing board and say, hey, we're going to treat this TIF district that's exempt that property from real property taxes, because those homeowners will be charged, like they're paying real property taxes, those additional taxes from the improvements that are made on that property is directed to that entity's township's improvement fund, fund those, so it's the value of the, like the vacant land and remaining, you know, it's not like that value for taxes, but for our purposes, township basically the taxes from that improvement, they direct seventy-five percent of that tax revenue per se, that's a thousand, it's a revenue to that improvement fund to make the improvement statement for a ten-year period without any board education. We've seen these in the past, copper townships, saw a couple of these with properties on the power road, commercial properties. Maybe township has done this in the past with the fairly high development fund, development of the fall courses, we gave them one there, so from water detention products and that development. As far as TIFs that are beyond a ten-year period, so we do have a thirty-year TIF that a private board education approved back in around two thousand and six, it was called the Shamrock property, not where the, that whole plant was up, broke out of the building, but the property like high on the, over the cowstone park, since I was older, there's a TIF there, the district receives what's called the service payment, which includes taxes, so that was, there was an agreement negotiated at that time between the organization and the city that states that district received a certain amount of revenue from, from that TIF. So we see somewhere around a hundred and sixty thousand a year. So also another TIF that was approved by private board, that was for the Heasley Park development, the Accor section of it, and there was a agreement that was placed between the city and the Accor, and I'm actually going back, auditing that, they're not sure of attention, so we see those payments, so we should have at this point, set them up a couple years ago, and some of their hardcore.
Do you know how long that TIF is? Because I think, didn't they end their, didn't they complete that construction around two thousand and seventeen?
The, the TIF is for thirty years with the late spread, so the TIF of the Heasley Park development was to, is to fund the interchange, not about forty-four, to give the taxes we need to replace that regular interchange. And I think the agreement says that once, once the city acquires twenty-seven million dollars, basically to fund that improvement, the district will be made whole on those revenues. So it's a thirty-year TIF on that one, so those revenues will come out later.
So, is it important for the full board to meet with all the interested parties and the TIF in this new development, for the TIF in this new development? The reason I say that is, there are probably some things that are going to be asked for that could probably be gotten by grants if other entities would do their homework and put forth the effort instead of the school district paying for it.
And we're going to have future discussions on that, you know, obviously with the board vacancy, we want to get that filled first, and we'll have discussions on, on that, that development as well, and those will be, look at August first and August fifteenth to have those discussions in the executive session for economic development.
Are there any additional meetings scheduled?
We had one earlier today, and then we're going through the numbers right now, so.
I seem to recall that when they, when we agreed to the previous one for Heasley Park, we had, we kind of played the same game, where nobody could give us accurate information on what that data would look like and what those funds would look like. We, we end up making decisions kind of in the dark a little bit, because the dollars aren't specified and it's vague, right? Everybody's guessing at what the property values will be, and so they say, oh, well, you're going to get X dollars because we think the property will be valued at this, and, and one side inflates it, and we're trying to come up with accurate information about how much money are we really giving up? And, and how much money are we willing to accept for this development? And I, I, I don't know, I just remember at the table, you know, we don't want a stymie development, but yet on the other hand, we don't want to not get our fair share either, and I think it's a tricky business to, to sit in on those meetings, and if, if we can have representation from the board at those meetings with them, if, at least somebody, I know I would appreciate it, but I, I don't know when those meetings happen, and so maybe we can, we can have some conversation about how at least somebody from this table can be included at those meetings.
I mean, I understand it a little bit, so I wouldn't mind being in the meetings. The, in my opinion, what you're saying was grassy is, if all the parties are willing to work together for the best outcome for all involved, then that's the ideal, okay? If someone's playing, well, leveraging this way or that way, and one party is getting, taken advantage of, and usually that's the school board. So, and you're exactly right, because there's, there's information that the school board does not deal with every day, that they deal with every day, and so I think we need to have a more complete understanding of it and a more complete agreement, and again, I, I come right back to what I said just earlier, and that is, if there are grants available, then I would like to see the entities, the governmental entities involved go for grants instead of taking the money from the schools.
I mean, at the, at the end of, at the end of it, I think what happens is that, you know, the, the townships or the cities or the localities want to move the, the, the projects forward, and they agree to certain infrastructure improvements, and, and their way of paying for it is to get basically us to pay for it by agreeing to reduce property taxes, and they rely on that when they go out and get their own financing, they say, oh, well, we have these agreements, well, but they don't tell us everything, and then they agree to that. They want the developer to develop the properties or whatever, but they can't do that unless they agree to pay for X, Y and Z, and their way of getting it paid for is to put us on the hook for it.
I don't think we're there yet.
Right.
Okay, so I don't think we're, we're in that situation yet.
I just want to make sure that we.
Right. We should have all the information.
Yeah.
And we should understand it, so I think it would be important to have it be a more open process, because a telephone game always loses or, you know, makes some information not as clear as it could be, so we certainly appreciate your efforts, Mr. Platko, in, in getting this information and disseminating it to us, but I think it needs to be a little bit more thorough for the board, if we can do that.
So I think the first step is this, right, you're trying to educate some of what a TIF is, everybody, right? And it sounds like you will have more information for us that we'll discuss in executive session upcoming?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can't read the paper on a daily basis without seeing all the money awarded to this entity, that entity for improvements, revitalization, I mean, it goes on and on, I'm watching what they're doing downtown Paynesville, there, there's just so many avenues out there to offset that would, and we're receiving the students, so, yeah.
So I had the, the next slide, I wanted to just bring up residential improvement district, which was kind of where I was going with this conversation already.
So let's just go back, do you know when the next meeting is?
We had one just this afternoon.
Right, but do you know when the next one is?
The next one will be our August first, we'll have an executive session to bring information to the board.
Okay, I'll talk about the next meeting that maybe a board member would attend, where you're getting information from the group.
We, we already have the information, we're going to explain it to the board at a, at the future meeting, and then we'll kind of discuss how we want to proceed forward from there.
And we can discuss at that point.
Right now, we're not, where there's no negotiations, it's just gathering information.
I thought we had asked, at least from, I recall, like we had said, hey, if we're going to, if they're going to have another meeting, we had a meeting, I think they had a meeting earlier in July, it's July now, in May. At, at your first meeting, and after the first meeting, like, hey, can we make sure somebody, somebody from the board is at the table when they have the next meeting? And if they had that this afternoon, I don't know that any of us were aware of that, so.
I don't know that, we can go back and look, and we can make sure somebody does get appointed in the future, but, yeah.
The first meeting, we didn't realize that there were a council of representation votes, so, so that, you know, so it would be scheduled a second meeting to have that representation, and that was today. Um, going into residential improvement districts, our geographic district is established by residential areas, and that allows the local government to divert a portion of property seats, they do, or say, infrastructure improvement to that district. Basically, it acts just like a TIF, but it's called differently, basically, copper township gives notice, they're doing a, a RID, and it's the I V bridge developing, which is, well, how, how, how special? On the, on the light phase, they, they're doing a ten-year seventy-five percent, so basically coordination has no, no advantage there, because they can be that found, coordination approval, and the end period, the public period on July third, sixth, third, and fourth. Just wanted to mention that, you know, we, you know, we have to say, I mean, I get discussions with some rows, with different opinions on, on those things, essentially they're reverting some of our future growth from that destruction, and they're using it to fund the second water station and some other improvement of the town hall. And they plan on doing these with a future housing.
So those funds are not being used to provide the infrastructure for the developments that are going in?
But they're going to say that it's providing public services for that.
That's the difference, we could, but I did a little research, a TIF can be used for.
Anything else.
Police supplier, whether RID can, or RID acts, so it's just calling it something different. At least that was my understanding, I was doing my research.
Is it improvement or incentive? I just want to make sure.
It's, the TIF is tax, tax, tax incremental financing.
Yeah.
A RID is a residential improvement district.
Okay.
Or residential incentive.
Okay, thank you.
They are also proposing another one, two, correct?
We will see additional RIDs in copper township.
They have, they have two developments that they're working on.
Yeah, but they're, they don't plan on going beyond the ten years of seventy-five percent, so.
Okay, we don't have any.
So they don't have, they don't have to ask.
So there's a lot more. So there's a lot more leeway for the township to take that money and utilize it however they wish.
On a RID.
So that's, it would be real nice if they would come to the table and talk with us to see if maybe we could come to a better agreement instead of them just telling us the way it is.
I mean, we can ask them to come back and talk about it, but again, I don't think there's, what incentive do they have to do that?
I don't think they have much.
Okay, I mean, we can ask them.
Yeah, it's all being a good neighbor, right? Working together, okay? Other than, okay, we're just going to tell you the way it is and pay us.
So I don't, if other conversations come up, I think that's what we're asking is see if they will talk with us?
Did they indicate that, is that in lieu of levy or something going on in the valley? Because I have heard that.
They mentioned nothing about their business in terms of that. They just said this is their plan and we will notify you as we need to.
As obligated. Their only obligation is to notify us and ready, we received that notification recently. And to be fair, Andy Rose did mention it. We, we had a, we had a different meeting where Andy Rose had mentioned it's administration before the notice was coming out, that the notice was coming.
It's very, and I kind of think this is what you guys were speaking of. Any kind of way to show us what the impact is to the district then?
That's the trickiest thing about, about these things is because everyone's estimating what that development ultimately ends up being and what the, what the valuation of those homes will be when they're developed. Because that's always the.
And when they estimate, they can, they can put a template out and show us if the value's this, it'll be this, if it's this, it'll be this. They could do that for us. So we would ask for that. A little more transparency and then maybe a little discussion where, where they could help us out a little bit instead of just taking. I know they want the money, but I think we should put light on it. And if we can get a little bit better deal for the school district, which helps the students, maybe they would be amenable to helping kids a little bit more.
All right, thank you. So I'm sure we'll talk about TIFs and RIDs a few more times.
That's a safe stop, please.
All right. So that brings us to public participation. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the board president. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium or on the side to identify themselves and their topic. And comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone wanting to participate in public participation?
Yeah, the only reason they came up to talk is you were talking about the.
Let's get the.
Go on, go for it.
Okay. You're talking about the TIFs and RIDs. You didn't talk about JEDs. And I'm just wondering, are JEDs also layered into these, particularly with the development with pro-belt homes over at the casement property? And does the school board understand what a JED is?
I don't have any details at this point.
Oh, it's a joint economic development district. It's another one of those things that, like Mr. Fishel was saying, you don't know what you're getting until you. Okay. Anyway, that was one point on the mic. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agendas. The first one up is finance and audit. Mrs. Brewster?
Okay. I want to make a motion to approve items A through letter P, P. That's how many there are.
I know. I'll second.
Thank you for seconding that.
No problem.
Mr. Placco, will you call the roll?
Ask for discussion.
Hold on, I.
I would like to thank the people who made donations. We had eighty dollars from Ohio Real Title to student meal accounts at Melridge. We had a hundred and twenty dollars from Ohio Real Title to the Melridge Elementary Activity Fund towards the purchase of friendship benches. We had a hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents from John Hanson to Riverside Athletics. We had two hundred and twenty-five dollars from the Progressive Insurance Foundation to the RLEF Activity Fund. We had a thousand dollars from Alan Wertheimer to the Class of 1964 Scholarship Fund. And I did skip one and I wanted to leave that one for last. We have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from RLEF to the RLEF Activity Fund. And just so that people are aware, RLEF did fold itself into the Riverside District and is now allowing the Riverside District to manage those dollars. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Dave Inzera for being the president of that, trustee of that organization for so many years and directing that organization to where it was able to have all those dollars set aside. In the past, we had had far more interest and participation in that organization than we had in recent years. And so hence the decision to roll that because there was just not enough people to participate and take care of those funds. But the, the funds are set aside for a specific purpose. We have already done that. And so I just want to thank Mr. Inzera for taking care of all that. And that is a large sum of money, but it will be handled according to the wishes of RLEF's original bylaws, so.
So would you like to call the roll, please?
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. And that brings us to personnel.
Okay, that's me too, right? Okay, I'm taking over for Jen, so I haven't done this before. So let's get back to where we are. Hold on, I had them all of your month. Okay. All right. So make a motion for items A through H. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Actually, A through K.
Oh, A through K. Sorry, missed this one. Eight, for items A through K.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Are the CCP instructors not on this agenda today?
That is actually a purchase service. That would be a purchase service.
Yeah, not a fire.
So, yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Placco, will you call the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to curriculum and programming, Ms. Brewster.
Who's going to do that?
Yeah. All right. I make a motion for items A through G.
A through F.
A through F. I went one too far. A through F, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay. And you'll second. Belinda seconded. Any discussion? Okay.
I think I can just point out that this includes the approval of girls golf, girls gymnastics, and.
Yes, the three new sports that we discussed, which is great.
Yay for them.
All right. So, Mr. Placco, will you call the roll?
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds and Operations. Mr. Fishel?
Make a motion to approve the items A through K listed on the Buildings and Grounds Operations Consent Agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Can I get a second?
I think it's A through J.
A through J?
Yep.
I'm sorry. A through J.
It's the new, it's the new environment, Ms. Brewster.
I did the same thing, right? So, okay, thank you. So items A through J as recommended by the superintendent. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Could you call the roll?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye. Motion carried. And then that brings us to Board of Education updates. Anything from the board?
I know, I know Jenna Harden's not here today, but I would just like to publicly thank her for her years of service.
And I enjoyed serving with her on the two committees, Curriculum and Finance. And, yeah, she had eleven years of experience and a lot to share.
But I wish her the best of luck in her new endeavors. She's going to be amazing at the things that she is going to pursue. So I'm excited for her. Too bad for us, but I'm excited for her.
Any other Board of Education updates? Good. All right. So that brings us to our next meetings. We have a special meeting July second, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a special meeting July third, two thousand and twenty-four. And we have a special meeting, if needed, July fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting July ninth at seven thirty a.m. A special meeting July eleventh.
July ninth, July ninth now.
Sorry, July ninth. Two thousand and twenty-four at six p.m. Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting July sixteenth at seven thirty a.m. Wait. Finance and Audit Personnel Committee, July eighteenth at seven thirty a.m. Curriculum and Programming Committee meeting July eighteenth at eight thirty a.m. And Board of Education meeting August first at six p.m. And those are all listed on the agenda in case anyone did not take all the notes, so.
Well, they, the board docs.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-one p.m.
Second.
Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Lori Kniske?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
And motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.